Event, we had students competing at the Indiana State Agro Science Fair. We had students competing in the Discovery Degree Ag Issues Forum. We had two different teams competing in that. And we had other students competing in different demonstrations and different speeches. And this year, we were fortunate enough that one of our teams, which we're going to recognize tonight, came out as our first ever FFA state champions. And Mr. Bai had a great deal to do with that team. He helped coach the team, he helped foster that team, and so I'm going to let him tell us all about his team and how well he did this year. So, we'll recognize them in just a moment. We've got some stuff. Oh, one more thing before Mr. Bai comes up. We were recognized on the stage this year as the only FFA chapter to be started in the state of Indiana. And so, all of the members that were in there signed off, and we brought all 22 members on the stage and let them be recognized in front of the entire delegation there. There's roughly 10,000 FFA members in the state of Indiana, and we were the newest chapter this year. So, congratulations to those guys for that, and we'll be now Mr. Bai, your turn. Sorry, sir.
Hi, first of all, I would like to thank the school board. When you think back, it's about a year and a half ago that you were making decisions as to whether or not you should do funding and organization for a new science academy and the establishment of the applied life science program. Thank you for making that wise decision. I think that as we have looked at the program, it has served our students well this last year. We started with three teachers in the 2012-2013 school year, and as you know, the program has now expanded. We've added the fourth teacher, and our fourth teacher is with us this evening, Mr. Clinton Bullock. He is over at the middle school. So, as we look at what has happened with agricultural issues, Ag Issues is a program that helps students understand the importance of looking at controversial issues and doing research on both sides of that issue. Putting together a presentation, and then making community presentations, and then also then at the state level competition, they gave a 10-minute presentation, and then they had to answer five minutes' worth of questions. It's a tough program. There were seven teams in the state. Two of those teams were from our Beach Grove chapter. The other team had the topic of wind turbines. Wind turbines are controversial because, first of all, on the pro side, they are a source of green energy. On the negative side, birds run into them. And so, there's one thing that the State House was considering was having additional regulations to limit the number of wind turbines in the state of Indiana. So, that was their topic. With the topic that these students presented, they were looking at the issue that Congress had proposed, a 3% cut in funding for the school lunch program. When you look at the impact of that cut on Beach Grove, there would be 52 students who are currently on free and reduced lunch, that after that went into effect, they would not qualify. They looked at the pros and cons of that issue. And what you have attached to your newspaper article is a summary of the pros and the cons that they presented. Okay? So, as we look at the information that we have here for the students, I think they did an absolutely outstanding job. At this time, I would like to be able to present plaques to the four student members of this team. So, at this time, if we could have all four members come up, and the four members are Colin Weddle, Olivia Malone, Megan Markorme, and Evelyn Dots.
Congratulations.
And I'll tell you what, we're going to go over here so we don't get hidden by the podium.
If you guys could just share a little bit about your experiences with the program for the year, experiences at the middle school, experiences at the state convention, national convention, just kind of what you shared like at our last meeting, just give us some information for the school board, what you guys think.
I think having an ag program here at Beach Grove is very beneficial for kids to know what it, where our food comes from, and pretty much where most of the jobs in Indiana and the United States come from. And being able to go to state and national convention was very fun, as well as educational. I met a lot of new people, which is always nice to have good connections in good places. I just think it's overall a great program, and I'm glad you guys made a decision to have it at Beach Grove, and thank you.
You're a great graduate.
I am a freshman this year.
These all, these students are all freshmen?
All freshmen.
Yep. Is Olivia?
I think it was a great opportunity that we were offered this year to be a part of the FFA, and I think it was very beneficial to our learning, and we gained a lot of new knowledge and friends, and I appreciate what you guys have done for us.
Thank you, Olivia. Evelyn?
It was pretty fun going to all this stuff for FFA. I got to like know people from, people from like Rhode Island and stuff, which I wouldn't do because I don't really talk to people. It was fun and inspired me to like do stuff more with like agriculture and animals and stuff, and now I ride horses, which is pretty cool. So, FFA is pretty cool. Thanks for letting this start.
This is Colin Weddle, and if you notice, he's wearing an FFA jacket. It looks a little, little worn. Colin, where's that jacket from?
Well, as it says on the back, try. This is actually my mother's jacket. I'm second generation, so I actually am wearing two of her pins, so. And it was cheaper than mine.
What do you think about the program this year, Colin?
One word, or two words, fun, but exhausting.
Exhausting, good.
No, I think my favorite part for the state convention was going up on stage and getting a giant plaque. So, no, national convention, I was really nervous. There's like a lot of people there.
I've got a question for you guys, just kind of general. You know, now that you've been through the program as an eighth grader, how's that affected your course interest at high school and possibly what you're thinking about doing once you graduate from high school and college? So, in essence, how's this affected you and what your future plans are, both short-term and long-term?
Well, we may get animal science now. I don't know, Colin.
Is your teacher okay? Has he been all right?
Yeah, he's pretty cool.
Game over tonight.
Yeah, I don't really know what I want to be when I grow up, but I do want a barrel race, which that's kind of led to that. So, yeah, that's kind of affected it, which is good.
Going to the state fair this year, from being just in animal science for just a couple of weeks now, I feel like I have a better understanding of how hard it is to raise animals, as well as compete. And just going through the state fair has like, I have a whole new perspective on looking at the animals now, and as well as what they are used for as meat, and it's changed my high school, what I want to do when I get older. I wanted to be a doctor. Now, I kind of maybe want to do something with animals, maybe marine biologist or something. I just think it's very beneficial, and I am glad that younger generations get to have this experience.
I have a question about your presentation, actually. Obviously, you did a really good job on getting your information. Do you think that this will go any farther, or do you think they'll take what you said into consideration about the school funding for lunches?
Hopefully.
I believe they, you get to find out if they look at what you talked about, because it's very interesting.
The judges that they present to are not in a power to do anything with that information. These are just people brought in by the state FFA Association to be judges. We could ask you guys to be judges for some of these different contests that we do, and if you'd want to do it, I could put you on the list. I know Steve thinks you're well, and you definitely want to have some of your expertise there. So, they're not really in a position to use that more, but let me tell you what they can do is, this was the discovery level, so now we ramp it up at the high school level, and they can take this same presentation, they can beef it up. We can not only do this for an FFA competition, but they can take this out to the community and present this to the mayor's office. They can present this to the Department of Agriculture. That's what we'll do with this now, is we'll take it to the next level and take these presentations out, and they have to, for the high school level, present this at least, was it five times, Bruce, before they go to this competition? So, at the high school level, they have to present it at least five times, and we'll do that this year. If they're still interested in doing it, we'll take this on the road.
But you know, your state representative may have never even thought about these kind of numbers that you presented, and I don't think there's anything wrong with offering that information to them.
Yeah, and we'll definitely want to schedule meetings with them to present it to them.
Because we can set something about Pat Miller, or other local representative, that's very easy for us to do, or if you guys want to come back on another board to present the entire, you know, presentation or argument. Our technology's not working tonight, so we decided to kind of delay that. We talked about doing that, but that would be a great opportunity for them.
Sure, and I think as we hold that presentation for next spring, this would be a great place to start with. Anything else you guys want to say?
The only other thing I have, the newspaper articles that you have, if I could ask you to give those back, because I'm actually going to give those to the students who went to the state convention. So...
They have them.
They have, no, no, I mean, the other kids for the other, the other 22.
No.
I don't have one.
Okay. And thank you to Melody.
If you really want it, you can keep it.
Thank you to Melody for putting that information out there. I mean, Melody's quite a champion for it. For Colin, since you presented the pro argument, are you pro, are you for or against this personally?
I'm for free and reduced.
So, how hard was it, how hard was it for you to present an argument contrary to what you believed?
It was actually kind of like easy, because I like, I already knew like the opposite point to it, because I mean, yeah, the government needs money, but they don't need to be taken away from the kids, so it was actually kind of easy.
I first had what he was going to do, and then I realized that I just can't really relate to this because I don't agree with it. And for him to go and pretty much make arguments on what he doesn't believe in, I guess is what he put it, was a really tough thing, and I really do thank him for taking that.
Well, I know personally that two of these young people are extremely hard workers, so I'm not surprised at all that they've done so well. If these two are even close to hard workers as Megan and Olivia are, they play basketball for me, so very, very good young ladies. Good job, everybody.
Congratulations, Keith.
Congratulations.
Chris, special thanks to you and all the sponsors, all your hard work putting this together. It's a great feature. Just so you know, we've gone from 230 students in the high school agri-science to 460, doubled that a year.
Mrs. Self joined me over at the high school this year from the middle school, and we are rolling. We've got the animal science program, six classes going, and just a lot of great interest. I'll be talking to you guys probably next month about national convention.
Good. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, now we have Shannon and Kevin are going to come up and talk to us. Hi, Mr. Banks, how are you?
I want to talk a little bit about the program that we did this last summer, that a special program that Shannon was involved with. Four years ago, the district received a special technology grant to kind of do some technology things in the science department. And one of the things that we had to do was get a college professor or somebody from the university involved. And so, I had the opportunity to introduce to Dr. Kaiser, a man by the name of Dr. Clark Gedney, and he's a professor up at Purdue University. From that, Dr. Kaiser, I don't know if you want to say strong-arm convince me or somehow, that we should take some kids up to his science camp for that summer, which we've now done for the last four summers. And because of the exposure that our kids have had with going up to this camp, I think it's led to a variety of things. I think it's led to what we now see with the life sciences having developed with the FFA. It has, this year, we've had the largest group of kids taking AP chemistry that we've ever had. So, we're seeing from those efforts, more and more kids taking more and more science and being prepared for careers in that, hopefully in their future. One of the offshoots that came from that was the ability for us to have a student to spend most of the summer up there doing actual science research. So, we selected Shannon Newworth to go up and participate with Dr. Gedney in doing a full-blown scientific research project. And so, I wanted her to talk about what she did this summer and the outcome from her research. So, Shannon?
Okay, so, like Mr. Banks said, I stayed probably roughly like four, five weeks this entire summer up at Purdue. I lived in an apartment with my roommate, her name's Kamlyn. She goes to like Central, which is up north in Indiana. She's also doing a project. And when I got there, I sort of had an idea that I wanted to work with staple crops like maize and genetically modify it so that it could become more salt tolerant. But when I got there, I was presented with another idea that two specific professors, one's name is John Cavalletto. He works with like making the labs for all the biology classes and plant science classes. And then the department chair of agronomy, his name's Peter Goldsborough, he presented me with an idea of isolating organisms off of two specific types of plants and seeing if there were differences between UV tolerance and if there were any differences between like the type of organisms that grow on this plant versus this plant. So, it was sunlight and no sunlight versus the Japanese yew, which was one specific plant that I worked with, and the Austrian pine, which is the other. So, after I took my isolations and everything, I had to go through this process, which was really long, and like we had to, I had to work with pipettes, which I don't know if any of you have ever worked with micropipettes before, but if you insert one more drop than you need to, it can mess up everything. So, you have to make sure that everything is completely precise, no errors, or you have to completely start all over again just from a little dish filled with your specimen. So, it's like extremely tedious, and, but at the end of the weeks that I was there, I got my results back, and my phylomantis fungi, they didn't, my DNA isolations, I didn't have enough DNA to actually specify which types I had found on my samples that I took. But my epiphytes, which are organisms that grow on the surface of leaves, they came back, they all came back. And I was sitting in the lab, and I was just like finishing up some papers and stuff, and all of a sudden, John runs in, and he is so excited, and I have never seen him so excited in my entire life. And he looks at me, he's like, "Don't kick your shoes off." And I'm just like, "What are you talking about?" And I'm like really like freaking out, thinking something went wrong like that. My isolation's messed up, something went wrong with the PCR, and I don't know, I was just freaking out. And he looks at me and he says, "F and G, your samples are new species." So, I actually ended up discovering a new species of epiphytic yeast, which is completely insane. So, I know this is, this is gold for science fair, which I'll be entering our regional science fair at sometime March, the week of March 20th. So, hopefully, once I, if I get out of regionals, then I'll go to state, and after state, then I'll go to intel, and that's where I'm hoping to go, because even just getting to intel is pretty crazy. So...
And what she hasn't also told you is that once it goes through the process of confirming that she has identified a new species, she will get to name it.
Yeah, it'll, well, I won't actually get to name it myself, but it will be named after me, because there's like, I won't know the official name until sometime when I'm in college, because I have to run a bunch of biochemical tests on it to ensure that every single bit of it is completely new. That it's not something else. So, just based on the DNA sequences that I got from it, it is a new species. That's what they think. And it has been reviewed over by other professors and higher people up at Purdue.
So, this is an outcrop of what has happened because of summer camp that she was involved with two years ago. A year ago, she went back up as a mentor for the two sessions, and then this year, she went up and did the, spent time doing a research project. That has now led us to now doing more, or having more students doing research projects. I presently have three other students who are starting this semester, who are now going to work on a research project, and they met with Dr. Gedney this afternoon. And so, our hope is that by the time we get to the spring, to the, to the regional science fair, we'll have at least four, if not five, individuals who'll be representing the Beach Grove at that competition. And, you know, having gone from zero to five, to me, is a pretty good accomplishment. So, our, you know, we're moving in the right direction in my, in my thoughts and feelings, and I think that as we continue to do things, these kinds of things, we're going to see more and more great things that our kids are going to accomplish. And I think Shannon's going to be one of those in 20 years with what she's shown already, that she's going to be somebody that we're going to see things published in some big-time science magazines. So, we've made some great strides with our kids, and hopefully we'll continue to do that, so.
You know, Kevin and I met with Peter last summer, we first met in his office, you and I were in there. And then he and Dr. Gedney came down last fall to kind of pursue this, and you know, you could hear the frustration in his voice, because if you graduate from Purdue with a modern degree, you're going to start at $60,000, 15 to 60. If you come up with a master's degree, it's going to be 80 to 90. If you stay and get your PhD, you can go 100, 100-plus to any, any place. And we're investing some money, we pay for the camp, and also Dr. Gedney gets money to help us with that. But we're talking about a small investment, I think, on our part, for our kids, creating just ultimate opportunities. I mean, look what Shannon's going to be able to do. I'm assuming Purdue's going to give her a couple dollars to go there, but look at what we're kind of creating for these kids. And we've got to constantly get them to think this is a possibility, because most of our kids, I mean, heck, I didn't, as a kid growing up, I'm doing this, I don't, I didn't have this type of vision. I think we're creating a vision quest for our kids that goes beyond what we can do within, as good as we're within these buildings. And I think that's, that's real exciting for us all. And we've got a great partnership with Purdue, and, you know, it's going to be exciting for the future. I think it's only going to get better, better, better. You know, Shannon's going to come in and talk to all the freshmen this year, encourage them to go to the science camp next summer, and really get this circular, circular process going on for our kids. It's, it's exciting.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Griffin, you're going to talk to us about the redevelopment commission?
Thanks for having me there. My name's Joe Griffin, I'm with the Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission. Before I forget it, could you please get one of your reps to our meeting and start, start coming to them? I'd like to rep, you guys have a rep that is entitled to sit on the board. It's a non-voting rep, but you can at least show up and you get all the other opportunities going along with it. So, please, please come and exercise your rights for that.
When does this meeting?
Thank you, pardon?
Next meeting's Thursday?
Thursday, we meet Thursday of the month, City, City Hall, 7 o'clock. Dr. Kaiser told me to keep it to under two hours, so I'm going to have to talk fast. And since you guys are fairly what I'd consider a bit above what the normal public is, I'm going to talk fast and throw it out there. The reason I'm here to form this partnership is the redevelopment commission and the clerk treasurer were kind of at odds, and then we started working with each other. We found out it started working pretty well. And if you sit out there and look at redevelopment, one thing they ask is what kind of partnerships do you have with who and what? And are you working towards that one plan? Do you have one clearly defined plan? And that one plan comes in partnerships, and in order to form partnerships, you got to get out there and extend your hands and get out there and get going. Now, the partnership that we do have, at times, you know, we took a little bumps on the inside, but we greatly helped each other out too, and that's part of it. People are asking me, why do you want to develop something with the schools? Schools for high school kids to get into is very competitive nowadays. So, let's take an easy one here, websites. You're going to go up here and you're going to sit in front of these school board to try to get into your recruiters, and they're going to say, "Well, you know, I do web design." "Okay, where'd you do it at?" We'll look at my web design I got at home, and they're going to go, "Okay." But you know something? Here, they can get up there and say, "Why don't you take a look at the Beach Grove Redevelopment website?" I worked on that. And here's the things that we can do on the web. For the web, we're talking about films, filming the meetings, film interviews, Facebook, other, other, other stuff, Twitters, presentations. We're going to need writers, have people write letters to the editor for us, articles for us to be posted on the web, and other reports is going to be done. We're also going to have goals, have them put down the goals, and what the RDC's doing, an update on that. Economics, we're going to have to have forecast studies in the future, especially the way they're going right now with the new laws and everything else coming down. We're going to need all the help we can get, because we work full-time, and we can use all the help we can get. Financial, the budget, taxes, bonds, and reporting, as we all know, we are owed money, but it doesn't mean we're always collected, so we got to have phase two and everything else going along with it, and the forecasting. Laws, we're going to have to look at the legal parameters. Probably after this summer, there's going to be some changes coming up again, and they keep changing the TIP laws, and I can't argue with some of them, you know? All presentations, we're going to have to have something out there for all presentations, have, have the kids put some of the stuff together, and they can still take this, research and defend it, as you heard right here. Documentations, documentaries, you know? And also provide, when they go in front of these boards, that I did do community service. Sit here and take a look, this is what I did. Be more than happy to put them up there. Also want to go to like U of I, because they're going to be big on community service too. So, the thing I'm going to pitch there for them is essentially the same thing, but they can go ahead and mentor these kids. And they will also be up there trying to impress their next employer. And they can get up there and say, "What'd you do?" They said, "Hey, look, Beach Grove Redevelopment, we helped write grants, we did do the forecasting, we did do all this stuff, we did real-life stuff. We didn't do just theory, we worked for them." Now, granted, it's still going to have to come back in front of the commissioners and in front of our financial advisors too, it's going to have to pass us. So, it's going to be sort of set up just like a company is when you go out there, and they're going to have to work with each other. So, hopefully, with the mentoring of the kids and the kids getting with the college kids there, they will learn a lot of stuff, and that might give them into U of I. We're going to try to approach IUPUI also. So, hopefully, they can work their way into something around there, kind of like what we heard right there, to give them a chance to get up there and get their name seen and a chance to see their work going. You sit there and wonder, you know, there's a lot of fighting about TIP, how we're stealing so much away. I like dreaming. Listen to these dreams. There was a commissioner that was on our committee, went to the Plainfield, and this is some notes from the Plainfield Redevelopment Commission, discussion of economic development errors with the Plainfield Community Corporation, June 26. The RDC pays over $400,000 each year directly to the school corporations. The RDC has passed through $100 million of excess TIP assessed value in 2011 and 2012. The RDC foregoes $2,800,000 in annual TIP money. The school corporation gains... The school corporation gains approximately $318,000 in capital fund investments, um, and reduced circuit breakers. The total tax rate is reduced by approximately .13. Uh, the town redevelopment authority issues $16.6 million bonds for, uh, road improvements around the new school at an annual debt of .08. Uh, the town, uh, RDC had funded approximately $63 million of infrastructure projects using TIF and Edit while leveraging other, uh, funds for approximately 84 million of, uh, private, state and federal funds. Outside the TIF areas, approximately 300 million of incremental value. Inside the TIF areas, approximately $602 of incremental value. Together, you can see if you form a partnership, you can work very well together. Where the TIFs get off is, is where they, they get pushed aside and you don't have a partnership, you don't have the transparencies, you don't have the other stuff, you don't have that one clear goal clearly defined to which everybody is working towards. The schools will do their part, the redevelopment will do their part. Uh, you know, uh, I'm dreaming, I'm hoping we can get the libraries on, I'm hoping we get the council on. The mayor has showed interest in joining, he's sat back, thought about it, he says he's seriously considering joining into the partnership too. Uh, we can go there and when you go for grants or you go for money, they're gonna ask, what kind of backing do you have when you're standing there? And now, here, I'm dreaming, hopefully they're gonna say, "What's the school board, I'd think about this." And hopefully, who's ever going after whatever grant, they can sit back there and look in that crowd of 70 or 80 people, I know there's several commission members back there, there's several boards, well, what's, what's your council think about that? Hopefully you look back and at 70 and 80 and say, "Hey, right here they are." When they see those strengths coming out, that helps. Hopefully we can get a website getting up here stating that we are all partnered together. Hopefully we can have that one plan where they can just go to that website and take a look at that website, because they are gonna investigate. And it'll be clearly defined who's in that and what we're doing. And we're all playing our role. And sometimes, when you're playing your role, you're gonna need some help. So you can go out there and say, "Help me here." You know, "I'm gonna need some help." And talk to some people and step up. Instead of trying to have one running and everything else, you can all work together and you come up here and say, "I need some help here," or, "Can we do this?" Or, "Can we do that?" And then you can have that one clearly defined area. Let me give you an example. Um, let's say in our clearly defined area, we decide that there's gonna be more parking needed for Main Street. So we ID where we want those. Let's say those houses come up. Whoever, whatever can buy those houses and then it's clearly defined what that house is gonna be used for. We can all get together and ID what our goals are and what's important for everybody in order to push forward. Maybe somebody's gonna have to give a little hair to get some hair. And this will bring together the process of everybody understanding that we all need each other in order to grow, to work towards that one plan, to get that one greatness. Uh, when I was growing up, how many of you made fun of Plainfield? I know I did. Plainfield, Avon, Danville, I used to repair engine analyzers and big joke on that was, uh, we'd get off the interstate, get up there, travel down, but count three stoplights, set your, uh, set your speedometer at 53 miles an hour, tie your steering wheel straight and, uh, set your, uh, alarm clock for 30 minutes, wait back up and then you'd be close to Danville. You can't do that nowadays, folks. Those areas all run across each other. They've got great TIFs. Now, let's don't get something, and, and this was amazing to me also, let's just don't rely on TIF, because that's gonna kill us. If we just rely on TIF, we're never gonna go anywhere. We're gonna need a CDC, we're gonna need neighborhood organizations, we're gonna need all these groups pulling together for one common purpose. We're gonna have to get, like, like was put here, private funds, state funds. Like when you go down to get the state funding or whatever else, we're all gonna put together as a group. Uh, we're gonna have to have more than just TIF, we're gonna have to have innovative ways of running around. We can watch other communities, because that's one thing other developments love to do. The ones that have made great strides, love to share their experience. You know, look at Greenwood. I made fun of Greenwood when I was growing up, look at them now. Uh, look at Speedway, Speedway's in the same shape we are. They made some changes, they pulled together and they got together. Look at them, they're on their way back up. Beach Grove needs something like this. Hopefully we can all get together and start getting a mission statement together, get something together and get pointed towards that one, that one plan, that one area that we're gonna have to go for. And all get back behind it and publicly state, "Here we are." So when they come out and start checking us out, we can say, "Hey, go to this website, check this out, here's what we're all about. Who do you wanna talk to? We'll get them there for you." Because we have this one plan. I met with a group of people the other day, uh, and God bless their souls, just like anything else. They were talking what we need to do to Main Street. And there were several of them, by the time they got done, it's, the example I give is is, they were all building a house. Now each one had their own ideas. And I told them, I said, "I wouldn't wanna live in that house." Because that house had this one, this one, this one, and was never gonna conjoin and be something. But if we get together and have that one plan, get that one idea and keep striving towards that one idea and every three to five years, take a look at it, don't be afraid to admit that we made mistakes, because we're going to. We're gonna have to minimize it. Don't criticize anybody for any of that stuff. Forget the past, let's move towards forward. Let's keep it going, let's keep our eyes forward. Let's dream, let's dream these numbers. Let's work towards those numbers, let's don't blame, let's just get out there and let's do it. I mean, that's the only thing that we're gonna do. I'm a Grover, been a Grover my whole life. I wanna stay a Grover. I remember the days of Mayberry, as somebody called it. Well, golly gee, you lived in Mayberry. I sat there and thought about it, go, "Yeah, I did. I loved it." You know? Uh, my wife, I got her, she lived in the Irvington area and we're getting locked to someplace, uh, for my house and she goes, "Wait a minute." She says, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm going with you." She goes, "You know how long I'm gonna be gone?" I go, "Well, I'll probably be close to midnight." She goes, "You know what time it is now?" I go, "Uh-oh, you're hurrying a test." I go, "It's 10 a.m." She goes, "You're gonna leave your house, front door open, you're gonna leave all your windows open, your garage door open, and we're not gonna be back till that time?" I go, "Yeah, it's Beach Grove." Unfortunately, we can't do that right today, but I could do it then. When I was growing up, you never locked anything. Didn't really have to worry about much. We lived in Mayberry. I still don't know the name of the streets around here, you have to tell me, all you know, over there by Whiteside's house. Oh, okay, now I know where you're at. We were that small town in the town. We can't use Indianapolis as a cuss word. We paid the highest taxes in Marion County and used the least amount, because as soon as you bring up Indianapolis, all of a sudden people are going, "Oh, wait a minute, we don't want them to take us over." Trust me, Indianapolis don't wanna take us over either. I went downtown with the clerk treasurer, they gave us some great ideas, I just won. But one thing they did say is, "We need to see Beach Grove." It's glad to see Beach Grove come in, but we need to see more of them, we need to see your faces. It'd be great if we could go down there on quarterly basis as a group and start hitting these people. We can start making our name local, then we can start carrying it to the state. They can see the bond that we have formed, they can see the partnership that we have. And that would be the way to get, there's a lot of free money that we're not using. We qualify for it. But the problem is, is we're all over the place. We need that one goal, we need that partnership, we all need to work together. Let's forget the past, let's work towards the present, let's work towards the future, let's get our eyes pointed that direction and let's go. You know, let's dream, let's dream down that way. That's what these guys had to do. I made fun of them when I was growing up, going to live in Plainfield, you know? Hey, that little pulled on town, Greenwood, are you kidding me? But look at them now. They took that dream, they took that vision and they, they worked at it. And Beach Grove can do it too. We have a lot of opportunities, we have a lot of stuff here. Indianapolis wants to help. Let's use our tax money. Let's use our ideas. They've got a lot of help that they wanna help us out on. They don't wanna take us over, but they do wanna help us, because it's gonna strengthen them. Anything they do to strengthen us is gonna strengthen them and they need it and they want it. So, well, I'm done with my two hours, I guess. Any questions there?
Let me just cut it back, because when Joe and I met a month ago, nothing half cooked in my office, just kinda talked about similar things and I think it's real critical that, you know, as we look at projects we might do, that we're really working with the RDC, see if there's matching grants out there, that's the key component. You know, they can't do it by themselves, we can't do it by ourselves, but you look down at Main Street, that was a matching grant, you know, that was put together to accomplish that. And then, uh, Citizens Water slash whatever their new name is right now, you know, they start working with the mayor and a lot of the, I don't, there's a lot of the stuff that's being done underground is free. Citizens is paying for that. And it's because the mayor went to Citizens with, uh, Mr. Lichten, I believe, and, you know, they talked about it as these projects were coming together. I think that's the key element of partnership we can look at and look at grant dollars. None of us have a lot of money individually, but if we could lump it together, you know, the city doing some, us doing some, I, I think we could create some things, uh, some great things for Beach Grove. I'm not sure we're going back to Mayberry, uh, because I grew up in the seventies and I understand that environment, but I think more importantly, it's, it's all about the redevelopment of downtown Beach Grove that will expand out, redevelopment of homes and getting people to start fixing up their homes that need some assistance. And, and America talked about that earlier, about developing a component of the RDC that would have that power to go out and get money and, and loan, loan money or grant money to, to people to fix out their house and their businesses. I think, uh, this is the perfect time with, with Main Street and what's gonna happen there. And I talked to Chris Kaufman yesterday about our FFA kids doing the landscaping downtown. And, uh, so, I mean, I think there's just a lot of opportunities across the board to get our kids involved and, and come together. So, that was kind of the genesis, uh, you know, I think, Mike, did you guys talk, I think you originally, you and Joe maybe, or I don't know how that all came about, or somebody suggested that Joe come see me and we did and we got the, kinda got the conversation going. So, uh, I guess I'll throw up the questions or comments back to, to Joe.
Just one thing I can point out real quick, if we had a CDC and a neighborhood organization and they had the same plan that we did, it'd be easy for the, the, the RDC can only do capital project plans within the TIF areas or directly benefit. However, if you can get a good CDC and a, and a good community development program going, a, a good neighborhood organization, they can help them out. Also, one thing that, uh, Dan and myself found out while we were down there, uh, we were informed of Senate Bill 433, I believe it is, talking about abandoned homes, that the, uh, local entities can get in there and take them also and put money towards that. There's a couple on our panel, let's go and go ahead and check into that. When they first started the RDC, I was on them about that and start doing the dollar, dollar houses and stuff, but since then, the TIF laws have changed and they changed it to whole TIF and that would, that would kill us, a whole TIF. But this would be perfect for Beach Grove, we could have the funds and everything else and, and go together, because in redevelopment, what they're gonna do, companies are gonna come in and look around, how tight is that community? They're gonna look real close, how tight is that community? How tight is that community working? What's gonna draw us there together? And when they come through, they're gonna wanna see something, hear something. And, you know, you can't blame them. If we're gonna attract the type of people that we wanna attract, they're gonna do the exact same thing. And they're gonna have to get up, or the people that we're working with today are highly educated and they're wanting to do some stuff and feel very, very safe at doing it. I believe we got some of those, some of those things that can happen here. And by working with, together with the partnership, just like all the successful ones, Greenwood, Avon, Plainfield, Danville, Speedway. I voted on Speedway's redevelopment plan, I don't even live there, but I voted on it. You know? That's what they're looking for and that's what's gonna turn them around. And that's why I'm hoping we can all get together in that oneness, for one plan, one partnership and try to gather, not only, uh, get all the organizations, clubs, churches, you name it, here in Beach Grove, because it takes it all to make one. And it takes all of us put together to realize exactly what we all work together and do, because it's always, "I, I, I, I need this, I need that." And we're so singleless focused nowadays. And hopefully once, one of the big keys on this, on the redevelopment is, is when you do start putting your plan together, you're gonna realize, "Hey, I need my right foot just as much as I do my left foot, oh, I need my hand, I need my arm." So you start realizing that and what each part can play in that. And each part is extremely vital to play that part. I'm rattling, questions?
Joe, I appreciate you coming by tonight and we'll kinda keep that line of communication open and we'll work on getting that non-voting person put together pretty quickly for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Um, we are just gonna move on to the rest of the meeting, so, Mr. Collins, how about curriculum?
Okay. Um, as you know, I think about two years ago, they passed a law that students had to pass the I read three in third grade in order to be promoted to the next grade. There are some options there, but basically that's the law. So every year in the spring, our third graders take, uh, state test. Um, our goal is basically to try to get 90% of the kids to pass the test. And so I'm gonna give you kind of the results of this last year. Um, so that's the first bit that I have in, in the report. Um, we ended up, after some remediation, that we had nine kids who did not pass the I read and we had 188 who did pass, which gave us a total of 95.4% passing, which that means we met our goal. Um, I do understand from, uh, Mr. Buckler, that our summer program was very, very well. Uh, I had around 20 some kids in that and it's all but nine didn't pass. He also said that of those nine, some of them have waivers, so they'll be going on because that's part of the law, but no one in our school district failed because of I reads. So I think it was kind of a good goal and kind of just supports our reading program, at least at the third grade level. And I kinda liked the report with that too, to me, so you can get an idea of what it was. So, I read doesn't hurt us, it does give us an idea that our kids are able to read at the level the states suggest they, uh. The next thing I wanted to mention to you is, uh, we decided when TAP came into existence, that we wanted to use a measurement instrument in kindergarten, first and second grade, rather than wait till fourth grade. And so we selected NWA. So what I do is, um, it's, it's a test given three times a year. It is not, um, uh, where you have a cutoff, you get any higher, it lets people go higher and higher, so it's kinda like a step ladder, so you can go as high as you want or even go as low as you want. So it's a true measure of growth. Um, so we use that for TAP and I turn that in each year. And then we hire SAS to do the evaluation and then we give it to TAP. So, last year, uh, our school, schools got fives, which is the highest level you can possibly get. So this is the report for the next year. And so if you look at it, um, our, our two schools did get fives for the general thing. Uh, many of our teachers are on what's called a 50-50 plan, so half of their bonus money is based on the highest that you can get, which is a five. Some of them who have kids that they teach, uh, 30% of their, uh, bonuses are based on the kids they have in the class, but 20% are based on this. So this shows you, grade by grade, how they do in the NWA. We don't have the statistics yet for how the students did match to the teachers, because they compare us to other TAP schools in the United States. So we're kind of waiting for that to be analyzed, because I have to wait for those other scores. Our scores are already in, but they're waiting for the other schools to do it. Uh, the only thing that showed us that we were average, if you wanna call it, was, uh, at the, uh, third grade math, which was on level, but was not the real, real high level all the other. Of course, the reading in, in second grade, third grade and math compensated itself to school give a five. But I thought that was kind of interesting, you'd like to see the statistics there that we have analyzed. Another thing I wanted to bring you up to date with, because it keeps changing yearly, is, uh, whether we're doing Common Core or not and whether we're a part of the park. I think I showed you, uh, last year, what park and the various tests. Um, it was decided by the governor that, I don't think we're really withdrew completely from it, but we were on the governing body, that means we were one of the states who kind of ran the show. We've kind of withdrawn from that, we're gonna sit back and watching that. Also, Common Core, it's not been decided, we're not going to do it, they just wanna see how much it costs. not going to do it. They just want to see how much it costs. I don't say it's going to cost a whole lot, because we're probably doing it on all grade levels. All the textbooks are geared towards Common Core, because that's what the other states are going to do. So, what's going to happen is they're going to pull us along, whether we like it or not. It's just kind of, we're on a, kind of a waiting period, which gives us maybe a little more time to analyze it and get it into the curriculum. But we've, I think, pretty much all the way through, we've switched to the Common Core. And the NWA test all is based on Common Core too, so we're getting the results that way. So, I don't think it's going to be a good bad trend. So, I do like Common Core, because it's higher level, makes you think. It's not just memorization, because let's face it, with the technology, we don't really have to memorize that much anymore. You've just got to pull out your device. I was at a meeting, and someone had a question, and no one could answer, so there was. So, it's a different, it's a different mentality than we've had before. And we can't just be geared towards facts. We've got to do some reasoning. We've got to be able to analyze what we're doing. And that's what this test is all about. So, eventually, it will come about. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is, we are working on a project which is kind of joined with TAP, and that's called Academic Vocabulary. We've had workshops on this, and we're developing the program in grades four through 12. So, it's a grow from one to the other, it's not just a one hit. The idea behind it is, is that if each subject is responsible for a certain vocabulary, and then have the kids really learn that vocabulary, we can build upon it. And if you have, let's say, 100 words at one level, and 100 more, 100 more, by the time they're in 12th grade, they have a huge amount of vocabulary. What they've suggested we do is to really teach it, we need to present those words 40 times in different manners, and so that they really learn it. So, we're concentrating on getting our lists, so they grow out of each other, and how to really teach in depth that vocabulary to drive, try to build a good basis for vocabulary. So, that's, if you hear about academic vocabulary, it's four through 12, and they grow out of each other. And we do have a consultant that's working with us, Smeccas is the company that's working with us, but Rita Bass is the person who really is coordinating within the district. The last thing I wanted to mention to you is, as you know, the federal government has been decreasing funds 5%. Title I is a federal program. I, we weren't, sorry, as I can tell, we're not decreased by 5%, we were decreased by 4%. I just gave you some numbers. So, we lost about $20,000. So, we had to kind of reassemble it, which is better than 5%. I wish we didn't keep losing money, but that's the reality of life.
Just to piggyback real quick, Sarah Wiley is also involved with Rita. They're kind of the two sidekicks. And the second day back, all fourth grade teachers, the 12th grade teachers met, and went through a Smeccas workshop. And again, it's really a building block from that standpoint. So, they've really done a great job doing that. Also, I-Step, I received a letter, an email today from Glenda Ritts saying that they hope to have I-Step results from last year to us by the end of August. And that is important, because that all builds in grades four through eight, as far as the TAP process and the, and the aspect of that. So, we will see that coming up soon. Obviously, the state said there was no lack of reliability and validity, based on the technology issues we had. I won't comment on that in the vain way I'd like to, because it does impact you when you're in the middle of a test, and it goes out. It did have some impact, but probably not substantially amount. So, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But just to piggyback off a couple of kids' topics there.
I have a question about the Common Core. Will, will Common Core affect the way that we assess our teacher evaluations? I mean, is it not a different way of teaching?
No.
I mean, I, I was looking into it, because as it's coming out in the newspaper and everything, I'm trying to educate myself, and understanding that, for example, in math, instead of teaching math where it's, you know, three, you know, 34 plus 34, we're now putting it side by side to get the kids to think in terms of ones, tens, hundreds, thousands, as opposed to the other way.
Would they benefit our teacher evaluation? Because if they test, and right now, we're using the old I-Step test, which is, does not have those advanced type of questions. But as soon as they, if we, if and when we do switch to a Common Core test, that we must have a curriculum that allows the kids to pass that test. What's happening is, in the I-Step, they'll just ask a question, and you pick one of the answers. In the other one, it's several steps, you have to show why it worked this way, and how you're going to use it, and justify why this was a good approach. And you can even take different approaches, rather than what you were, we were taught. Maybe there's a different way that you figure, but you came out with the same answer. They will give you credit for this. So, there's more thought, and more, how did I, how do I use this? How, how, you have to interpret what you're going to do, not just whether I got it right or got it wrong.
And if you think, the evaluation parts are still going to be based on TAP work. Now, these are the criteria, some are that, anybody else has, these are the expectations. What's going to change is the training for the teachers to make sure they adjust to that instructional process. For example, you know, the old story problems that we all hated. Well, that's Common Core. You know, it's taking a real life situation and trying to analyze it. And it's how you write, you get away from writing about Shakespeare to you write more about informational text, what's happening in the real world. So, it's just a different flavor and a different approach.
In the Lang and Judge part, what we, what is on I-Step is they give you a passage, and then you, they ask questions about the passage. Now, with Common Core, they'll give you two passages, and you have to compare and contrast, and take parts of this, and see how it aligns with this part. So, you can see it's much higher.
I just didn't know if we were going to have a grading curve based on having to reteach some of the ways that we are teaching.
I think that's where the structure of TAP will work, because what most schools do is they just have a consultant come out, or they send some people to workshop. We will have consistent, every day, every week, of how to take this information and convert it into what we're doing. We're also now converting, and we've been converting for the last three years, so we're already trying this, these new approaches.
And that's the beauty of TAP, is it's an ongoing, everyday opportunity to work together to learn strategies. And so, anytime they decide, well, we're going this route, we can implement immediately upon our next goals and our strategies to teach one another, teachers, and in teamwork, what strategy to utilize. And so, I think that will help us to be well ahead of a lot of other districts that are not, are not full TAP and fully ingrained with cooperative learning model that we have right now. So...
It's a complete effort. So, many of us, as one teacher go here, one or two, and we do our own thing. We are all working together, because we, we work in groups, and share the information, and people come and visit our rooms and give us suggestions. So, I think we're in a really good position to...
And I think the key component in our TAP instructional model, teachers have the opportunity, and are in essence forced to meet one hour every week. For example, we've already had teachers in every building party about for an hour, and we're in the second week of school. And they will meet for 36 weeks, an hour a week, plus all the other outside stuff. So, we'll have that opportunity for the staff to go about training, and, you know, I use the term kind of brainwashing, but the teachers will be trained through the TAP process on a weekly basis, so there's that monitor and adjust. And as they teach a strategy, then the master teachers, mentor teachers go out and observe right away. So, there's a root of reinforcement involved in it.
Once we implement this, are we going to, is there a strategy to educate the parents as far as the, this new core?
The problem is, is the state of Indiana has us, and we're moving in that direction, growing with it, trying, and we've started developing it, and now we've been told to sit on it.
But I think, Rick, I think our strategy will be, once we know what's happening, I think we can have, at the back to school night, pardon, our parents are sending out newsletters. I think we need to do it that way, almost kind of a gradual release model. So, in other words, we're constantly getting the information out to them, not just a meeting, and that's it.
Because it is going to take an education of the parents as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But it goes with the technology here. You have all this technology, and it's just not, you can find anything on the internet, but it's comparing the two, which is the most valid, what actually answers your question, not just red dispatches.
I can just imagine little Johnny's sitting, doing his math homework, and he's got his stuff laid, laid out like this, and Dad says, you're doing that wrong. No, this is the way this so-and-so says to do this. All right, thank you, guys.
I have another question also. When you're talking about the academic vocabulary, will each one of the different classes for high school, let's say, will they be giving vocabulary tests along with everything else to ensure that they're learning these terms?
There will be evaluations of the vocabulary, yes. There's various ways that it'll be taught. We did, we, the research does say that looking a word up at the dictionary and writing it does not work. They give a little story of a child who was looking it up in the dictionary, and turned it to the teacher, and the teacher looked at it and said, well, I didn't know you could speak Spanish. I said, well, no, I don't. Well, she had, took the Spanish version, copied everything. So, see, that's all what, that's copy. So, we're learning strategies that are scientifically based on how to teach, how to teach vocabulary. And then, each area has about 30 words that they're going to be responsible. So, I've, and I've been working on this with Rita. The US history, we'll have US history, 30 words, geography, 30 words, physical education, 30 words. And so, there's 30, 30, 30, 30. I was just looking at the fourth grade list, and you know, there's hundreds of words that we're going to be teaching 30 times in 30 different ways, so the kids will, will know that. And then, we've coordinated across grades, so they don't keep repeating, repeating, repeating. So, there, by the time they get to be seniors, they should have a pretty good vocabulary.
And I think another key component of this whole philosophy is, we freed up Rita Bass three years ago to go and start working with her English teachers. We were alone, especially in middle school English. That's the reality of it. And I don't think it was a lack of effort, it was a lack of articulation. So, Rita started working with the seventh and eighth grade English teachers, along with Sarah. So, now, we've become the dynamic duo with those two, two teachers working together. If you know Sarah, she's, she's pretty, I mean, those are two dynamic teachers for us. So, now, not only are they working, going down to fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, but I saw Rita this evening, and she was grading high school essays based on how the teachers graded. So, she's working with our high school English teachers to make sure that we're consistent, and we're following what we want to do from a standpoint of instructional practices, and research, and a lot of other things. So, that, that's a key component, because you're taking some really high quality teachers, and they're teaching adults how to become better teachers. And that's, that all kind of weaves into the concept of our continuous quality that you see around the room. We have a new banner up in the right-hand corner that really spells that out. But it's this constant staff development. And I talk to Lord Kidd all the time, my biggest concern is, we have probably hired 40 new teachers in the last three years, because of retirement and things like this. How are we going to bring them up to speed on what we've done the three years before that? And, and that's our biggest challenge, is getting our young teachers, and that's what's so valuable about TAP, once a week, they have an hour of staff development. And whether they want to or not, it's all part of it. And that's what's, it's exciting to me. When, I was at South Grove today, having lunch with my daughter, who's, who's subbing there, and, and the table next to me was talking about NWA, they were talking about this and everything under the sun. And I just kind of, when I got over, I said, you guys do that just to impress me? But it was really true. The, the teacher vocabulary, the teacher talk has changed, I think, in the last five years. And it's because we have a CQI model that has a focus, and we have a focus on, on what we think's important. Teachers are not just teaching, well, I want to teach about the Wizard of Oz, because I love it. They're teaching basically on the academic standards, and NWA, and how we're going to assess it. The key thing with Common Core, the type of assessment's going to change, so the type of teaching is going to have to monitor and adjust a little bit. And if you think of problem solving, and you know, those type things, that's where we're going. Compare and contrast, it's not, well, what do you just think about this passage? It's really going to become a higher level, if you look at Bloom's taxonomy, and, and that application base. So, it's exciting, but it'll be challenging, but I know we'll, we'll come to the table on.
I was at Hornet Park, cluster, set through two clusters at Hornet Park today. And it was interesting, before they came in, they said, now, we're going, we've compared this experienced teacher with this first-year teacher, so they can kind of be, work together, so she can learn from our experienced teacher how, how to do something, give them, give them some ideas. So, even in the clusters, they're grouping them, so that the new teachers can learn from experienced teachers.
Well, I'm kind of glad you didn't say older teachers, experienced teachers.
I don't, since I'm in that category, I don't do that anymore.
Dr. Hammack.
My report just included some of the information of events and activities that were happening over the summer. It really doesn't feel like we had much of a summer, this, this go-around, because it just went so quickly, and we had so many things going on. You know, just hearing Shannon present about her opportunity up at Purdue. You know, we write these grants, and, and we know that great things are coming to our boys and girls, but when you see a student speak about an experience like she had this summer, I mean, it is, we talk about engagement all the time. I mean, just the opportunity that she was presented, you know, with that grant opportunity, her, her life's path has been fundamentally altered as a result. And it's, it's just really inspiring and motivational for us to kind of continue to seek funding sources, so that we can continue that great work. What FFA and what the science department has done to advance our students, it's, it's truly, it's just touching. It's so exciting to see these kids doing great things. I feel like she's so much smarter than me. I am just so impressed by the work that she's done.
I'm glad you said that.
I mean, oh my...
I was thinking the same thing. She was just rattling things off like everybody should know it.
Absolutely. I'm like, what, you're 16? You know, like, it's just so cool. It's so cool to see our kids doing such great things. And, and really, our summer programming was all about just that, you know, finding opportunities for our boys and girls to be able to engage in activities that they would not be able to engage in on their own. The Buzz Club was extremely active this summer. We really moved from kind of a traditional, you know, sort of learning environment, plus, you know, arts and crafts, and, you know, fun activities like the Buzz Club used to be, to a really engaged curriculum-based summer program that was run through the NASA Ignite Program. That is sponsored clearly by NASA, but it inspires movement, and force, and space, and really a very engaging science curriculum for the students, while simultaneously allowing for them to engage some really cool outdoor activities. So, for example, when they were studying gravity and force, they went to the Sky Zone up in Indy, and they did the trampoline jumping, and they measured force, and, and all of that kind of good stuff, and, and just had a great time, along with the, the wonderful things that they were learning. We had the grade IREED III remediation going on at Central, where we got all those students to be able to pass and to move on to the fourth grade. There was a wonderful program at the middle school. Mrs. Eckstein really took, just a really neat group of kids on this opportunity to visit the state parks of Indiana this summer. So, kids who have never been on a hike, you know, because they've grown up in a very urban environment, were able to go to places like Clifty Falls and Brown County State Park, and they were outside. We had that really beautiful, remember, kind of cool June? So, they weren't so hot and sweaty, and they, they were able to just get out and really enjoy nature. These kids were exhausted at the end of the day, and that's just a powerful experience that they would not be able to get by being in front of a television, right? We had good remediation going, our summer servings program was happening, so our boys and girls were receiving wonderfully nutritious breakfast and lunch. We had a lot of traffic going in and out of that building, so that was great to see our, our students staying healthy over the summer. And the high school was, this place was just busy all day, every day. There were camps and various activities going on the whole time. So, I just love the concept of us being open for 165 days, sort of that, you know, that the school is the community, and the community never stops, right? So, I think our summer experience really reflected that mission, and we are only hoping to kind of continue that, that work, as, as we're looking for, again, all those granting opportunities to make these great things happen. Any questions about what happened over the summer here in the district?
It's kind of quiet.
Yeah, it was. It was a really fun summer.
Children that we serve in summer servings?
Oh, Nancy, I would love to get that number for you. I don't know. We can get that, for sure. So, I'll make a note of that for you, and we can bring that back for our next meeting. That's a great question.
And we expanded summer servings. Last year was at Hornet Park, and this year, we're at Hornet Park, and...
Well, our, our main location was at Hornet Park, but we did satellite feeding. So, we had stack lunches and breakfasts built for our Central and our middle school programs. So, and then, yeah, we also had some collaborations through the apartment, of course.
Yeah, there was a question about the funding of that. That is a federal free-funded program. We will prepay based on just kind of the cost of the commodities, but at the end of the summer, we take all of our data and all of our numbers, we turn it into the federal government, it is 100% paid directly back to us. And it is, it's absolute something we've got to continue to advertise. And we felt by having the food truck kind of option this year, that we were able to go out to our regular programming and serve a lot more kids. And so, I think you'll see our numbers probably quadruple, is my anticipation. So, we'll bring that back next month, and we'll have those numbers played. But again, whether it was 500 or 2,000 lunches and breakfast, it is fully funded. So, it's an outstanding thing for us.
I think we can all agree, though, it doesn't matter, we're going to pay, we're going to feed the kids, no matter who pays for it.
Oh, yeah. It's good.
Thank you for the comment. And it's true, you know, our world never stops. You know, as a result, our school should never stop making a food out of it.
It's a fun place to be, this Beach Grove. I thought you would.
I will say, my, my nine-year-old, Jackson, who I just printed, he participated in the Buzz Club. And he wanted to do it right at first, you know, we signed him up, and he was kind of like, oh, man, in three weeks. And so, we had to come to a compromise, because he delivers meals on wheels on Wednesdays. So, he came Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, which Thursday was the field trip day, so he wasn't about to miss that. But he had a ball, and he had Mr. Crook as a teacher, and that was a good opportunity to, and he did. too. And he had a ball.
I'm so glad to hear that. Thanks for the first-person experience. Great.
Thanks, Dr. Hammick. Mrs. Stevens.
Hi, how are you?
Wonderful. What about you? Thanks. I have to echo what Dr. Hammick said, too. I tell you, this district is such a wonderful district, and there are never, there's never enough time or space or anything to talk about the great things that happen here. I mean, every day there's something with students, with a teacher, with a program. I mean, it's absolutely phenomenal to see all the great things that are occurring. And it happens consistently. Hope you were able to see last week's paper because we had front page on Hornet Camp here at High School. Hope you saw Dr. Keely with an umbrella on the first day of school with Mr. Gerhardt welcoming students at the middle school. We had a section where Dr. Kaiser wrote a welcome-back message with other pictures for Southside Voice, so, you know, really good. And I think one of the things that we're most proud of a district as far as how we're doing our public relations this past summer is that we did meet our goal of consistently being in the paper every week throughout the summer. And that was our goal because we wanted, again, as Dr. Hammick said, you know, we're a 365-day-school-year kind of community now and we need to serve our students, our parents, everyone. So we did do that, and that's a great thing to be proud of. I won't go over everything because I don't want to make your meeting longer than it is, but district video is still being worked on. We're able to film some scenes with FFA and Science Academy since last year when we did filming, that wasn't in existence. So that's been taken care of, too, so it's a really great thing. As far as the National Education Foundation, this Thursday, we're holding our first meeting in a school year, and we're welcoming two new board members. One is Lori Dager from U-Indy, who works in the adult learning area, and the other is Liz Shetley from Beach Grove Library. And so we really feel like we're starting to help add a little bit more diversity to our board, and that's our goal, and we're going to continue to build that board to reflect that diversity and bring others with some expertise that are not just in Beach Grove, but are outside, but have involvement and care and concern about the city of Beach Grove and our schools. So it's an exciting year and it's going to be a great one. So thanks for all your support, too. Okay, Dr. Keely.
Good morning. Business, business, business. Wonderful summer working with Kelly Educational Staffing. We worked diligently to transition all of our substitute teachers over for two full-day training days. They turned in paperwork, did all their fingerprinting, all their neat stuff to become certified substitutes for us, and we started right in. And not on wood, but things have, everything's been filled, and we have a wonderful number of available employees now. And again, there are multiple districts now here in Central Indiana that have substitute teachers certified through this company, and so it's just going to make our available subs better. Again, my goal for you and goal for the district and goal for the teachers and administrators was to not leave a classroom uncovered because that is such a detrimental, difficult day for a building when we don't have a substitute covering the class. And this, in my opinion, truly ensures a high-quality educational experience even when a teacher isn't available. So we branched out a little bit. In talking about substitute teachers, Kelly Educational Services then came to me and said, "Hey, by the way, we do have trained individuals who understand attendance programs and can fill in as subs in your office area as well." And so I've branched out into an area for quality employees that are just kind of office-staff support. And so that is one area that I hadn't anticipated would be something. But it's, and sometimes you have a maternity leave or you have whatever kind of leave going on. And sometimes we want to value and open that position and keep it ready. So we're going to open up and have the opportunity for regular, some of the regular staff members to have time when they're off to be filled with some commonality and some common employees. And so that's what I prepared for you tonight, is a kind of an addendum there to that to be able to be approved a little bit later. Community health partnership, I know that you know, we do the athletic training. We have expanded services and come to an agreement that the middle school football, middle school wrestling, volleyball Saturday tournaments, basketball tournaments on a full-day Saturday. We don't have two trainers, and we can't ask our trainer to be covering all of the things going on district-wide. And in the fall, we have soccer, and we have football, or JV, or freshmen, and middle school. We've got multiple venues and facilities going at the same time. I really feel like we were asking way too much of him, running around trying to cover things, and when then an emergency happens, we couldn't just expect him to be Johnny-on-the-spot at the right place. So we've asked for additional hours, and I think it was 500 additional hours, is that right?
Yes.
Yes? Agreement is to include up to 500 additional hours. We don't have to use those hours, but when we see these scheduling conflicts and we know that there's a competitive, you know, combat nature kind of athletic event or activity, we're going to ask a trainer, athletic trainer who could take ice on the spot, give recommendation to coaches. If a kid gets a concussion, there's the final word that says, "No, you sit out." No matter who says what, you sit out, I'm the medical training person. And so I think that's just right, it's a good kid-centered decision-making. And so I'm going to ask you to approve that with a motion. And then finally, under business, P-P-C-A-C-A, which is the Affordable Care Act in a long way. We have some IRS penalty and payment authorization board kind of language. Already we had some generalized language that was for errors and omissions for business, payroll, Pam, Henders, myself, Brian Tomlin, Michael, and others. The Affordability Care Act legislation needs to be signed separately and intently because of the amount of the penalty that can be in place for such an Affordable Care Act legislation penalty. They can be lots of money. And we can, we'll do everything we can possibly, but the IRS has unfortunately set up governmental entities to where when you deal with thousands and thousands of dollars, they penalize you on a percentage of your overall total budget, or they penalize you on a percentage of your overall total number of personnel. So it's a catch-22. And so if, in fact, we got into a position where we owed and we had serious problems, we certainly would ask our attorneys to review, look at things, and give us recommendations. As they are, as we enter the different legislations, every few months, something new is going into place in healthcare. And so we are being advised as a Hoover School Benefit Trust Board on a month-by-month basis on how to take the next step, how to take the next step. Well, this is kind of one of those next steps, okay? So do you have any questions about that? And then I put some other language in there as far as a resolution that has to be specifically... Do we have those resolutions written out? Yeah, there it is. So under the business update, it says, "Your motion by blank to adopt a general indemnification policy and resolution as presented." So that's one motion. And the other is a resolution to pay, and that is explained also by the IRS.
So who would like to make a motion to adopt the general indemnification policy and resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second, please. Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we need a motion to adopt the resolution to pay. Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have a personnel...
Personnel, yeah.
With one little issue.
I marked it on there. It's an extracurricular action, and I put table only on my notation.
Just comments and questions.
That's fine. And so under personnel, as you know, every August I'm going to have a slew of them, and so there's a lot of people listed here. Anywhere from teaching assistants to special education assistants to aides to a speech-language mathologist. Kind of a approval of our summer work, help who is there, elementary student coordinator, title changes for Brian Tomlin, Michael, and Eileen McManus, as well as the custodial change. And I do want to explain the custodial change because I really feel like that there's been money saved in our attempts to have companies in specific areas. In saving those dollars, I wanted to come back to the board and say, the A-team that worked over the summertime and the employees we have in place work in custodial. Currently, there is not one of them that I would dismiss for any reason. I met with about six today, got hugs from two. They're great people who work very hard. And I wanted to establish the difference between a substitute custodian at 10 and a valued employee who's been here for at least a year or more at $11. They have gone through assessments by me, they have gone through scrutiny, they have been transferred around, and they are valued. And I wanted to recommend, some are paid at 10.28, some are paid at 10.30, a couple are 10.55. I wanted to set the standard, substitute custodians can be $10 an hour, but our valued custodians, and we're down to under 10, we're down to 10, I think need to be valued at $11 an hour, and they've been here a year or longer.
And we have ten of them.
I mean, it's not really poor. I think it's nine.
Nine, okay.
But I moved a maintenance person over to the high school to be a evening go-to maintenance slash floor guy. So, I think that kind of makes 10. So that's my recommendation. I think it's important to recognize when you have good people in a specific area and they work really hard, especially through scrutiny, because I've been on, I'll be honest, and they've made it. And I wanted to pat them on the back and tell you that I really value them, okay? And that's why I put that starting salary there. So people have to be with us three months, they have to go through a physical and show that they can pick up certain amounts of weights and do some specific things before they're anointed as a full-time custodian. And so when they get that, the base rate pays $11.
I want to add one comment. We're, Tom and I and Lord Kit are really going to go back and look at our classified staff. We have not really addressed their hourly wage for some of these people. Take Windows Life here at the high school. She's, I mean, she might as well be a teacher. You know, she is phenomenal, and yet we're paying her at really minimal wage. And so we're going to be coming back to you as we look at our teachers and that process. There's some of those key employees that have been with us for a long time that we think we need to go back and address specifically with those and look at some things differently in our classified staff. Because most of them have not had a raise in five years. And we think we're at a point now with some enrollment things, we can address some of those people that have shown some longevity with us and address them individually. So we're going to do that this evening from a timing standpoint, but we will come back here definitely before Christmas time and look at some of those key employees that have been here, we want to keep them for a long time. Again, the custodial is just the start of that discussion, and there was a larger group we could deal with, but we have some key people we want to address in the board.
I need a motion to approve the personnel update.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Rick. Who would like to second that, please? Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And operations updated?
Yeah, I will take that as well because I did the research on this. I have worked diligently on the facility rental usage administrative guideline, which is 7510. And I contacted some area schools around and just kind of got a fee feel for, what are the fee structures at Perry Township, at Center Grove, at Whiteland, some surrounding districts? And our utility costs are low. Not out, I mean, not crazy out of the way. And we don't assess a fee for our As and B groups. And our As and B groups are our Beach Grove groups, As are our sports teams, Bs are our booster groups that are affiliated with our kids. However, I want to recommend that the Cs and the Ds who pay to use our facilities, pay a little bit higher that's more standard, but we're still well less than half of what some of the higher socioeconomic school systems are, like Center Grove and Wayne Township and some other areas. We're well in a conservative range, so we're not going to dissuade usage of the buildings. We'll still have it very much available. But the fee structure's changed a little bit because these people are willing to pay, and we want to be able to pay our utilities, so we're going to use our money to do that. And so I think it's an okay thing. So there's a whole listing up there, and I put in there also the comparison to Whiteland so that you can see those dollars. And then Whiteland's are one-half of what Center Grove's fee structure is. We want to keep open. We want the community, we want people to use, this is a great place. However, if they're going to have the blazing lights, I think they need to pay for it. And so that's what my recommendation is. There are also discretionary opportunities. Dr. Kaiser and I see something like the Cavaliers that is a wonderful, they're not our kids, but they embrace our music and embrace our departments. We are going to, we're going to, you know, write a waiver and say, "They don't really use that much, they have the food truck and they do take trash away, but they don't use that much electricity." For donations to the music department, we may waive some fees so if it's beneficial to us. So we have that discretion, and we'll always have an open way to communicate with you. I think this is a much different approach than about seven years ago. I remember, if you remember, the fire, fires we were putting out and all that. This is still a very consistent, open approach, but I'm just kind of shoring up the dollars because we haven't visited it in over five years.
It's been a really long time since you've raised rates of any kind and utilities have gone up.
Electricity has certainly gone up in our costs.
As has water.
And so we're just going, we're kind of staying status quo with electricity.
And I just want to emphasize, we are not charging our booster groups, okay? In fact, the only thing charged at all has been for custodians because we have some there. We're even working on a plan internally to take care of that, some of our employees. So we don't want to charge our Beach Grove groups that work with our kids. So just so, as we talk about increasing costs, we're not charging those people. We don't want that rumor to get out there and start getting emails and other things. And that's staying consistent. Again, the only thing we are charged all, what really does that is a custodian if necessary. And, you know, again, we think it's good to have people come on our campus, then they might move here, which is one of our goals. We talk about economic development. And so they come into our buildings, and I had a discussion with our coaching staff last, two weeks ago. Right here, this room was full with 40, 50 coaches. And I asked them why we invited the Cavaliers in and let them come here. Again, the Cavalier says, "Bruce, how many people are in that group?"
150 marching and total staff, so it's about 225.
And so, and I asked them, I said, "Well, why do I let them come here?" And the person said, "For the money." I said, "Well, yeah, we get a little bit of money," but I said, "It's economic development." If you imagine, 220-some-odd people, their parents, their cousins, and everybody. I was downtown, I went down Thursday night and watched them perform. I was down Friday night for an Indians game and watched them every place. By allowing the Cavaliers to come here, not only does it set a vision for our kids in band and everything else, it is a huge boost to our local economy.
It's a draw.
It's huge.
It is a draw.
And, you know, so those type things, we want to attract. I mean, we want to, you know, we want to bring those people on our campus for what it brings economically. And I explained to the coaches, I said, "Now, the guy from the Cavaliers, he works at FedEx, pretty big shot at FedEx." And so an application crossed his desk, it says, "Beach Grove High School," he's got to pull that and put it in the interview pot. And with all those Cavaliers, when they come back, if they come back to Indianapolis and Southeast Side, we hope they come to Beach Grove. If not, they're going to have cousins and aunts and uncles. Every time we let them come in, there's a connection back to Beach Grove. The lady who worked with the Cavaliers for 25 years sat next to myself and my 21-year-old daughter on Thursday night, and she went on and out about her hospitality, you know, across the board. And again, she's been doing it for 25 years. This is our third, fourth, maybe fifth, I'm not sure how many years they've been coming here, but she talked about how that's great for us. She and I were talking economic development, she goes, "If you all knew how many dollars this brings to the community." So we're going to continue to bring those groups into user facilities because it brings so much more to our community besides just a few dollars in rental. It's a long-term effect, so. Bruce, any comments on Cavaliers? You were the one that was the catalyst for a lot of that.
It's a outstanding opportunity for our high school band and a great model. And what was also impressive is the, we had a few coaches that are swimming coach or swing, PE teacher that had guys in the swing pool. And one of the staff members came to me, the Cavaliers staff member came to me and said... And one of the stat numbers came to me, the Cavaliers' stat numbers came to me and said, we heard your PE teacher say, all right, you want to do laps? If you can't handle the laps, if you're concerned about endurance, get in the outer lanes. If you really want to see endurance and kids that are in good shape, go out there and watch the Cavaliers march. You will then understand and appreciate what you can actually do if you in fact get in shape. And in addition to being a fine example for our high school band members, I think that there was also a mother of a, on the nursing staff who basically said, I'm talking my daughter and I want to have my daughter submit her application here to the Beach Grove system. They live in Pennsylvania. And she said, I think this would be a fine community for her to live in.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so, we need a motion to approve the fee structure unless anybody has any other questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the fee structure.
Thanks, Tim.
Second.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Quotes, bids, donations, and purchases. We have a Walmart foundation grant for $1,000. We need a motion to approve. Do we have to talk about that anymore?
Surely folks gets it reoccurring now.
We like that, don't we? Okay, Beth, thank you. Who would second, please?
I'll second.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, we have a motion to approve fundraisers. Do we need to go over all those? We don't do either. Okay. Who would like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Tammy.
I'll second that.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, we need to approve overnight, do we need to talk about the overnight bull camp before we approve that? Look at him, Rick, oh, no! Okay, well, let's make a motion to approve that, then.
I'll make that motion.
Rick, who would like to second it? Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, do we need to talk about the board policy on bullying?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
If you haven't watched the news last night, Carmel School Corporation adopted a very in-depth board policy on bullying. And they use Neo, which we now subscribe to, and we're waiting for the update to get to us for that. And I'm telling that because we're probably going to come back another time to talk more about this. Excuse me, the law says we now have to track bullying, which we do in our own way. We have a lot of programs on bullying. But we've been asked, really dictated to have a very specific policy. And the policy we adapted last time, as Bob Run looked back through it, he thought there's some verbiage we should add to it, at least for the short term. And that is, Robin put that at the table, and I had a few of my copies there. And so, we need a motion to update the policy. And I want you to know it'll probably still have further updates.
Okay. Okay, well, has everybody read this? Do you have any questions about it? It doesn't matter, we need to approve one or the other.
Yes, legally they are.
Okay, so, we need a motion to approve the language on the board policy for bullying.
Motion to approve.
Rick.
I'll second that.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any board members have any comments, suggestions, questions, concerns?
Dr. Kaiser, will you be going to give us an enrollment update?
Yes. The end is full.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks to, you know, I say thanks to Melody, but I don't want to give her too much props because I don't want her to get, you know, big mad. But I really believe our marketing efforts over the last four years have come to fruition. You know, I made a comment to parents or to our teachers that I really prefer not to take transfer kids. I love to have just Beach Grove kids. But the reality is, we've lost 200 Beach Grove kids in the last three years. You take 200 times $6,000, we would really be up the creek without the proverbial path. On the contrast to that, because of our marketing efforts and quite frankly, just because of the great school system we have, we now have waiting lists at all our buildings. The law changed, it expected July 1st, and in the past, we could set a criteria of 2.5 GPA, a 95% attendance, and you can get in trouble. I mean, that's just generally what it was. And we kept that in place up through June 30th. In fact, we advertised to parents, if you enroll before June 30th with 2.5, we guarantee you a spot. Because we wanted to get those really eager parents and kids to get on board. And we did. We have 160, 260 freshmen, which is a little bit larger than we want. So, we took an English teacher from half-time to full-time, I think, I told you that. But we have waiting lists at most grade levels. Because what had to happen under the new law from July 1st on, you had to randomly select kids to fill your spots. And we talked at the June meeting about the capacity level. So, we're really looking at 235-ish at most grade levels, and that gives us nine sections. And South Grove will be a challenge next year, but we'll talk more about that as we move forward. And we've reached those capacities. And so, at almost every grade level, we have kids kind of waiting in the wings. You know, if a kid, you know, decides to leave in the mid-year or so, or between now and September, or now in January, we might go to that list and say, hey, we have it open, do you want to come in? Right now, those waiting lists are just waiting. We're probably not going to take more kids because, believe it or not, we still have parents the second week of school enrolling kids for the first time. And it's not because they didn't know in many cases. It's just, you know, well, we're on vacation, we have people that says, well, I wasn't sure we were going to come to school here. I mean, there's a lot of rationale. So, we're enrolling kids for the first time that live in Beach Grove, even this week, for a variety of reasons. So, we're not going to take any more kids probably until January that are transfer kids because we have enough kids. I mean, we're at our capacity at almost every grade level. That's class sizes, 28 or lower in K through 6 on average, and under 30 at the other levels. Now, middle school, we're over capacity because once we set the capacity level, we had a bunch of Beach Grove kids move in. So, you know, we couldn't kick transfers out. You know, you're allowed to go over the capacity if you want to. You just can't self-select those kids. Does that all make sense to you? It's a simple process. Our great hostess, Vanna White's in this end over here, and Robin and everybody, we actually took every application, they put a ticket number on it, we put a ticket in a glass fishbowl, and Tom drew them out, and that was the order. We even had a mom come up and hug Eileen because she, her kid made it to the lottery. So, and that's the process going forward. Now, we cannot, we cannot take kids in January that are not in the lottery on the waiting list until we fulfill those on the waiting list. So, if you want to come to Beach Grove, I would suggest you apply early and apply often. Because...
So, are those that are on the waiting list, are they, so, every lottery, everyone's name?
They're ranked now. They're ranked in order now, and the first one on the list is the first one that will get in.
Okay.
January 1. We're also, you know, we also have talked about the curriculum and the educational impact of allowing a child to transfer during the semester. And we're not, we're not in favor of that. We don't think that that is a good thing for education. We think that the, even if the parent was willing to, we as educators don't believe that's the best process. And so, we like the end of semester at the very, you know, at the very most. And then, we like any at the end of the year would be the opening. But, so, I would anticipate the first, next opportunity, since we do have a capacity issue, would be January 4th or 6th, somewhere around there. So, that would be my anticipation. So, we're not going to pick them through there all the year, month by month, because it's just not good for kids.
And we got the issue resolved at the high school with the one class or the middle school that was full of kids, we got that taken care of, right?
Yeah, basically, that's what we had. Our honors, we had so many new honors English kids. And I appreciate Tammy letting me know upfront because I didn't really know how bad that was. And we quickly, the next day, we had Mrs. Herman, who was full-time, half-time French and pretty the other half of the day, and we added a section of honors English, which kind of leveled that out. And the reason we're taking more freshmen is because of the attrition. You know, so, we'll have a larger freshman class, we know unfortunately, kids are going to drop out and move, and it'll attrition down to about a 235, and we're under 200 at both junior and senior level. But we'll probably take more freshmen and then staff accordingly. And we've done that, you know, we may have to hire another part-time algebra teacher to help that at the freshman level as we move forward because those are two key areas. You don't want your algebra, your English class is too large, and it kind of exploded on us. And, you know, we weren't going to, we originally had the kids test out, and I told Steve, we're not going to take kids out, they've signed up for honors English, let them try. And we did that, kind of moved forward. So, Gina was happy, she's now full-time. She was teaching part-time here and part-time at Rock Colley a year ago, decided to move away from Rock Colley and work here. She was going to be an aide the other half of the day, so she's now a full-time teacher and she's excited.
Now, I have a question about the, you say we're at around 30 at the other buildings. Are we going to allow that to drop to the 27 that we set in July before we start accepting others?
You know, that's a great question. You know, K through 6, it was about an average of 28. And middle school was an average of 30. In the high school, it's about an average of 30. You know, I think middle school, I mean, that's a little higher than I would like. I'd like to get it down to 28. As, as we move forward, I told the principals, I'd like to take that 30 and knock it down a little bit. I'd like to see, as we get more state funding, you know, kind of get that down a little bit. But to be honest with you, the financial efficiencies, you have to have your classes that size. I mean, Hamilton Southeastern, Westfield and Carmel, these districts, they're putting 35 in a class. And we've been able to avoid that. So, I think there's that happy balance with that, Rick. And I can't tell where that is. I know we, I don't want it to go larger.
There's been a number of people in the community that are saying this is, that we're doing this because it's about money. And I have to say that I agree, and I don't think it's a bad thing. I think that people, you know, the general public don't understand what, what our assessed evaluation is in Beach Grove and how, you know, we aren't Speedway. We don't have a Speedway, we don't have a Coca-Cola, we don't have an Allison's transmission. You know, we don't have those types of things. We're not a Plainfield or a Danville because we don't have the landmass. This, we're landlocked and we're stuck here, and we are dependent upon the residential taxes that we bring in because we have St. Francis, we don't get taxes from, we have Amtrak that we don't get taxes from. And the other positive thing about this is that we have a waiting list. So, that might force parents, the students that want to come to Beach Grove, to come to Beach Grove looking for a house.
And that's exactly what we told...
Which is going to make our, you know, our SSU rates.
Down where Janice lives, I drive down there all the time, there's probably four or five houses for sale. And that was, that's what we told people when they called in. I said, well, how can we sure we get it? I said, there's apartments and houses for sale in Beach Grove right now, move in. And I think it is going to have an impact. And like I said earlier, I don't like the concept of allowing transfer kids, but with our enrollment, we would be in real trouble. We wouldn't have the arts. We wouldn't have Jase Sutton and those teachers. I mean, and what people need to understand, the transfer kids help us buy services that benefit all kids. We wouldn't have the act program, we wouldn't have everything that we do.
Roof repairers.
Yeah, and truly is. Why do we take the kids? We take them for the money. And most, most schools, a lot of schools in Marion County are doing it in around. A friend of mine, I'm having breakfast with at Clinton Prairie, up on Highway 26, they've got over 100 transfer kids in the whole community strictly for the money.
And I would, I would argue, you know, that we shouldn't be doing it for the money if, if our education was faltering or decreasing. And it's, it's not. You know, it's just not. It's getting better, you know? And it's, it's the reason why my parents stayed at Beach Grove was because of the schools. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't because of the lake, you know, or the, or the river. You know, it was because of the schools.
Yeah, that's for sure. And the comments from some parents who think that we, you know, they make comments, well, they better not take a transfer student over my kid because we live here, we don't do that, we never do that. And they need to understand that we wouldn't.
Well, my daughter's a transfer kid, and I will tell you, when she got here from her previous two years of Monroe, she was a 3.2 student, she was a 3.8 last year. She got pushed, she loves the block schedule, she loves Mr. Cox, let him go out to lunch now as seniors. And she told me last night, she said, I feel like I'm in college because I go to two classes, I get an hour for lunch, I come back and take two classes. She's taking eight classes from animal science to photography, and, you know, for a 3A school, we offer just a bunch of things for kids to take. And, you know, we're paying $1,000 for those kids to go to science camp. It's worth every penny, right there, when we saw the time machine, it's worth every penny. Your son went last year, and I don't...
And when she graduates with a PhD from Purdue, she can remember our alumni association.
Absolutely.
But, anything I would say?
Foundation.
I guess I'm the perfect example. When I say, well, those people don't pay taxes, you're right, they don't. But, and I would be here anyway because I work here, but I buy my gas at Speedway, I eat here, and I will tell you, those large number of transfer kids, they come and they buy goods and services here. And, and that's why we let those people come on the weekends, AAU basketball, the little girls and the little dance groups. I mean, they spend lots of money at Beach Grove. And I look at it this way, those transfer parents are spending a lot of money at Beach Grove that they wouldn't if they weren't here.
And let's look at the fact that we're adding a teacher for English. Right? You know, for our college prep English class.
AP English, actually, not just English.
So, it's a, you know, I don't make any qualms, we take the kids because it generates money for all of our kids. And that's, I think that's real critical. And it's the way of the world. We run this, this school district, Tom and I, Laura Kit, we run it like a business when it comes to the finances, we have to. And we recruit, Decatur Township did not take transfer kids this year. They're down 200 kids. For some reason, they made the decision not to take them. Take 200 times $6,000, you can do the math. Guess what, in January, they're taking transfer kids. You know, it is the way of the world, whether we like it or not. So, and we got a great, great product to offer people, so. I don't, I'll make any qualms about that. We got a great thing to sell and we're selling it.
Anything else?
Yes, I have something else.
What?
Well, I want to congratulate the FFA on the fantastic job they've done the past 365 days. How awesome is that? I mean, what a great thing. I, on a personal note, I got to move my daughter into Ball State this week.
Of course.
And she, and she got to test out of English and Spanish. So, thanks to Beach Grove Schools, they're saving me lots of money.
Where's she staying?
She's staying in Woody Hall.
She's in Woody? Oh, okay.
She's in Woody.
Woodcraft was the best one.
So, I'm, she's just really excited and she's, she can't believe how prepared for college she is, and that's all because of Beach Grove Schools.
Was it hard?
It was very hard. I was fine until it was time to say goodbye.
Yeah, yeah. It was hard for her too, you know?
It was. I had to go back today.
But, Sarah, you did?
I did.
Wouldn't you forget?
I had nothing, we just had lunch.
That's nice.
Well, the Village is a great place to eat.
The Village is a great place to eat. Yes, we've already been there twice.
Yes.
Anything else? Well, then, we need a motion to adjourn. Tim, who would like to second it?
I'll second.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.